Mr. Stubbs?
Here.
Counselor Oropesa?
Here.
Counselor Henderson?
Here.
Counselor Robek?
Here.
Mayor Kentai?
Present.
Mayor, you have a quorum.
Thank you. At this time, I'll ask everyone to please rise while Counselor Peterson leads us in the Pledge of Allegiance and Counselor Grant does the invocation. Counselor Peterson.
Please bow. Dear and gracious Father, dear Lord, I thank you for this evening and all of us gathered here tonight. Dear God, just be with us and be with our body and our council and our staff as we make decisions for this city moving forward, dear Lord, and just watch over us and keep all of our first responders safe and on military, dear Lord, in Jesus' precious name. Amen.
Amen.
Counselor Stubbs?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move to approve the agenda for the November 14, 2019, regular city council meeting to include the minutes from the workshop on October 1, 2019, and the regular city council meeting on October 10, 2019, to also include the three ITBs, two awards, an RFP, a lease agreement, as well as 10 RIAC leases and four resolutions.
I have a motion by Counselor Stubbs and a second by... Counselor, will you activate the vote box? And a second by Counselor Peterson to approve the agenda as presented. Any questions or comments, counselors? Hearing none, I'll ask for a voice vote. All those in favor of the agenda as presented, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, please say nay. Hearing none, passes eight to zero. All right. First item up, Mr. Morris.
Good evening. This is a recognition of Meredith Hildreth. Zoning Administrator Meredith Hildreth has spent the last year enrolled in the Department of Urban and Environmental Policy and Planning at Tufts University in Medford, Massachusetts, in order to obtain an Urban Justice and Sustainability Certificate of Advanced Graduate Studies. That's a mouthful. But it's a post-masters certification in urban planning. As part of the program, Ms. Hildreth needed to complete several papers, one of which was of the importance of bus shelters and amenities and how they can enhance mass transit operations within the city of Roswell. She later submitted this paper to the New Mexico Chapter of the APA, which led to the NMAPA issuing an award for her paper, in addition, awarding the city of Roswell. Ms. Meredith... Ms. Hildreth would like to present this award from the NMAPA on this action to the mayor as a representative of the city of Roswell.
Okay? All right. Thank you. Congratulations, Meredith. All right. Ladies and gentlemen, items number three through 24 on the agenda packet were approved when we adopted the agenda and the consent agenda. We are now moving to item number 25. Counselor Oropesa?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Mayor, I move for approval of Resolution 1992 to support New Mexico Environmental Department Clean Water revolving law... I'm sorry. Loan to fund the wastewater treatment plant facility in the amount of $5,500,000 for design and construction, and this is with the recommendation of the Infrastructure Committee.
I have a motion by Counselor Oropesa. Sir, if you'll activate your vote box. And a second by Counselor Henderson to approve Resolution 19.92. Before we get started, Mr. Nahar, let me... Ladies and gentlemen, if you have a cellphone, as I do, please silence it, as I'm about to. And Ms. Call, do we have the sign up... I don't have the sign up sheet. Sorry about that. Okay. Thank you. All right. Mr. Nahar, sorry for the interruption.
No problem, Mayor. Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'm here today to talk on two items. The first will be a resolution. The second will be an ordinance. It's dealing with the same topic, a clean water revolving loan for the wastewater treatment plant. I have been up here before for drinking water loans. Drinking water loans are for the drinking water. The clean water loans are for when we're done with the water, making it clean again and putting it back into the environment. Resolution 1992 is very simple. It's to authorize the mayor to sign the agreement and Ryan Porter and myself to do all the reports during the construction and the design of a dewatering facility at the wastewater plant. The loan will be for $5.5 million for design and construction. As Counselor Oropesa said, infrastructure did vote four to zero October 28. Just to give you an idea of what the loan is for, we have our wastewater treatment plant who gets all the gray water. Once it's done, it has a product called sludge. And the sludge is, right now, when it's too dry, goes out in our drying beds, which are outside, and they turn with the brown bear. Mother Nature dries it, and we just turn it with the loader. What we're asking for is the money, the funds, so we can build two screw pump installations. That's just a sample picture. We would only be building two. But in essence, the screw pump would squeeze the water out and facilitate the drying of the final product at the plant. And I stand for any questions on this item.
All right. Thank you, Counselor. Any... Mr. Nahar, any counselors, any questions or comments on this matter? Counselor Henderson?
Well, this is... And this may be more for the next item, but it's my understanding that at this point, it's not anticipated that we would have to raise any rates in order to fund this project. Is that right?
That is correct. In July, infrastructure, Juan Fuentes did do a review, and based on the review, the waste... The Water Enterprise Fund can handle this loan as our rates and our income on the water fund is now. So to answer your question, no, we could... We would not have to raise any rates at this time for the sewer and water, which are combined right now.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Counselor. Anyone else? Questions or comments? Seeing none, I will ask for a voice vote, a yes or aye approves Resolution 1992, a no or nay rejects it. Once again, a yes or aye approves Resolution 19.92 and no or nay rejects it. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, please say nay. Seeing none, hearing none, passes eight to zero with two absent. Thank you. Next item up is item number 26. Counselor Oropesa, again.
I moved to advertise for a public hearing and vote on proposed ordinance 19-09 to support the New Mexico Environmental Department Clean Water revolving loan to fund the wastewater treatment plant, dewatering facility, and the amount of $5,500,000 for design and construction.
Okay. I have a motion by Counselor Oropesa and a second by Counselor Henderson to authorize the advertisement for a future public hearing and vote on proposed ordinance 1909. Mr. Nahar?
Mayor and Council, again, with the same topic, New Mexico ED Clean Water revolving loan for the dewatering facilities at the wastewater treatment plant. By law, the ordinance is required, so the city can borrow the money, and it goes to the governing body. Again, it's a $5.5 million loan for design and construction. The interest rate is 1.2%. The term is 20 years. And the payment on a simple calculation, based on the principal only, is $309,500 a year. There is a 1% service fee when the loan is created and a 0.25% administrative fee during the payments, which is standard is what we've done in the past with the drinking water.
Thank you. Counselors, again, and ladies and gentlemen, let me point out, this item and, in fact, the other three items, we are not taking action on the proposed ordinance. The question here is whether or not we advertise for a future public hearing, which would be if it passes next month. At that time, there would be a public hearing and a vote to approve or disapprove the proposed ordinance. All we're doing tonight is saying, yes, go forward with a public hearing at a future date. So with that in mind, counselors, any questions or comments on item number 26? All right. Seeing none, hearing none, we can do a voice vote on this one. Ms. Call, correct? All right. Once again, this will be to authorize, to advertise for a public hearing and vote on a future date on proposed ordinance 1909. A no or nay rejects that going forward, and a yes vote approves the future hearing and action. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, please say nay. Hearing none, seeing none, it has passed eight to zero with two absent. Next up is item number 27. Counselor Stubbs?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. At the recommendation of the legal committee, I move to approve for public hearing and vote at the December council meeting, ordinance number 1908, revising Article 4 and 20 and adding a new Article 21 to the zoning code. Yes. Period. Period.
Okay. I have a motion by Counselor Stubbs and a second by Counselor Foster to authorize for the advertisement for a public hearing and action vote on proposed ordinance 1908. Mr. Morris?
Thank you. This is a request to advertise for some additional text amendments, which will be addressing tiny homes. Staff has been receiving, and it's been increasing, a number of calls about the use of tiny homes. And here's a couple of examples. And the concerns are not so much about the actual house or the use of these houses, because they do have uses for affordable housing and in other locations. The concerns are that when they are placed in either neighborhoods next to very, you know, newer homes, and concerns about the values, and also concerns in communities that are under stress and putting these in there as well, especially the container homes. We all know about the cute little wooden ones that we have, that we've seen. Now they're coming in with container homes, and that is a concern for us. Another issue that we were a little bit concerned about is that these are easily stackable, and people can do some really amazing things, not always maybe good. So recently, the state has actually created its own administrative code change to define what is a tiny house. It's in the administrative code. It's a unique type of housing, basically anything 400 square feet or less, which is basically a two-car garage. The intent of the proposed text amendment is to create places for them that are appropriate in the short term to see. As I said, we're fielding a lot of calls about these going into different places. We think part of it is part of the push for additional housing coming up from the oil patch. That's what they're telling us. So we're going to look for appropriate places. And to do that, we're looking at two possible sites. One is in existing residential mobile home subdivisions, which exist today. And also, staff wanted to maybe create its own subdivision for tiny houses, so if you put them in next to each other, they don't have an effect on the adjacent neighbors. So what you got here that we're proposing would be, first off, to define in our code what is a tiny house. Again, adding a new definition, tiny houses are basically 400 square feet or less, and above that would be a standard single-family. And then Change 2 modifies the residential mobile home subdivision zoning district to allow tiny homes as a permitted use inside that district. And finally, Change 3 is the creation of a new district, the residential tiny home subdivision. Planning and zoning heard these items and recommended approval by a vote of seven to zero. Legal committee heard this and recommended approval by a vote of three to one. And as I said, this is a request for a public hearing. I stand for any questions.
All right. Thank you. We did have one individual sign up to speak on this matter, Mr. Todd Wagner, if you'll come up at this time. Please understand, the matter before the council is not the approval of this ordinance. It's simply whether or not we proceed with a future public hearing at the December council meeting. So go ahead, you have three minutes.
I'm Todd Wagner. My one question on the tiny... Mobile Home Residential Tiny Home Subdivision, which is Article 20. Currently, Article 20 allows many uses in the permitted uses under R1, okay? Which is a single-family home, some other things. We have a number of existing mobile home subdivisions in Roswell, and they're mostly larger lots than what you're talking about in this one. But if you don't allow in the Article 20 portion to have the permitted uses in R1 and the special uses, or be selective on what you're going to allow or disallow, I think you're making an error, and it probably could be corrected and allow some of those uses that are in R1 or special uses. And you have to, you know, you have to go through them and look at them. But I know it's something, if we get to next month, you're not going to have the time to sit and think about what you're not going to be able to do in some of those existing mobile home subdivisions that we already have. And some of them almost have some R1 development in them, other than mobile home or manufactured homes. So there's... And there are a number of them spread around town. So I think you'd better look at that item one more time before it gets to council to vote on, because that's too late. Thank you.
Okay. Mr. Morris, will you get together with Mr. Wagner and go over those concerns he has?
Absolutely. And I think Mr. Wagner is raising some valid concerns, and so we'll go through and sit down with him and...
Okay. So Mr. Wagner, you'll get together with Mr. Morris?
Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Counselors, any other questions or comments on this? Since this is an authorization to advertise, I will ask for a... Oh, Oropesa, Counselor, I'm sorry. I missed you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just want to make sure I heard Mr. Morris correctly. Correct me if I misspeak, but I believe you said that the committee was thinking about a particular section for a tiny home? Did I hear you correctly?
We're looking at three changes. One would be to have a new definition for what they are, separating them from large houses, as making them a distinct type of house. And we're looking to put them into a residential mobile home subdivision. And finally, to create a new separate zoning district subdivision just for tiny houses.
And where would that zoning district be located at?
Wherever somebody applies for it. It doesn't exist today, so somebody would come in, and just like any other zoning change, would request that change from whatever it is to the tiny home subdivision.
So when you say create a district, you're not talking about a specific area in Roswell? Is that correct?
That's correct. We're just talking about creating a district in the code, just like all the other districts that are there. And if somebody wants to utilize it, they could come in and request it. And actually, we've been talking with one person that is very interested in doing just that. But there's a regular rezoning process, just like we do numerous times throughout the year for different locations.
And I don't want to jump way ahead, Mr. Mayor, but we are going to be looking at another issue concerning sidewalks. So how is a sidewalk issue that we're going to be... Well, not discussing tonight for... But how is that going to affect the tiny home lots or whatever? Are they going to be required to install sidewalks like any other house, or...
Yeah. Yes, sir. And I mean, they're just... There's still standard requirements for... In the subdivision code, anybody comes in, whether it's an R1 or an R4 or whatever the zoning district is, there are standards that they have to abide by when they're planning out their subdivision. They install sidewalks, streets, water, sewer, drainage, all those things.
Okay. Thank you.
I have Counselor Foster. Counselor, you have the floor.
I just had a couple of things that I wanted to clarify, because of the question about if we were looking at certain areas. But a contractor coming in would have to have an area of land, 2.5 acres or bigger, correct?
Yes, sir.
To get it zoned as a tiny home subdivision. And then also, the tiny homes we're talking about are ones that are being put on the foundation. These aren't ones that are going to be left on a trailer and could be moved.
No, they'd be on foundations.
Those are the only things I needed clarified. All right. Thanks.
All right. Thank you. Anything else, counselors? All right. At this point, I'll ask for a voice vote. A yes or a aye authorizes this matter to be advertised for a future public hearing and action, this matter being proposed ordinance 19-08. And yes authorizes that advertisement in public hearing, a no or nay rejects it. All those in favor of authorizing the advertisement for a public hearing for a proposed ordinance 1908, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, please say nay. Hearing none, seeing none, passes eight to zero. Next up, item number 28. Counselor Stubbs?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move to advertise for a public hearing and vote on proposed ordinance 19-10, amending Section 2-17 of the Roswell City Code relating to establishment of ward boundaries to be held during the December regular city council meeting.
I have a motion by Counselor Stubbs and a second by Counselor Foster to approve for advertisement for a public hearing and vote on proposed ordinance 19-10. Mr. Holloman?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Tonight, this is... This first item is a bit of a housekeeping matter to clean up things. The New Mexico State Legislature has recently made changes to the way that the county establishes precincts throughout the county. Specifically, they require, if there were 750 voters within the preceding election or 2,500 people in the last census, it needs to be a separate precinct. That's significant for the city, because our wards are largely defined based on those precincts. There are some exceptions, and that's one of the reasons that we have the map attached to it. So what the county has done is they will... They are splitting some of the precincts that are necessary to meet those new requirements. This is Resolution 1923. And it will... All it does is adds additional precincts onto our existing wards. It does not change any of the ward boundaries as they're established now. Here, you can see the two precincts that are split in Ward 2, the one on the west and the one on the east. Those are just cut in, so you have the smaller corner cut into the larger, bigger piece. Ward 3 in... So Precinct 21 was split, so that it is now segregated down at the southeast corner. And Ward 5 has two changes as well. The area around the air center, there is a piece cut out of the north, and then on the northwest of what used to be Precinct 63. With this, we're asking that you hold the public hearing in order to make this change. This way, the county's changes are in effect in January, and once this comes in effect, it just updates our code to be consistent with what the county has done. Thank you.
Okay. Counselors, any questions or comments for Mr. Holloman? Just for your information, counselors, this did not go to a committee. We learned of this too late to put it on legal, which is where it would have gone. We're concerned because the effects of changes of these precincts is January 1, so we would have to act on them in the December council meeting. If you have any questions, please feel free to talk to Ms. Call or Mr. Holloman. They've both researched this extensively. So unless there's any questions or comments, I'll ask for a voice vote. A yes or a aye would authorize the advertisement for a public hearing and vote at a later date on proposed ordinance 19-10. A no or nay would reject that. All those in favor of authorizing advertisement for a future public hearing and vote on proposed ordinance 19-10, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, please say nay. Hearing none, seeing none, passes eight to zero with two absent. Next up is item number 29. Counselor Stubbs?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. At the recommendation of the legal committee, I move to advertise for a public hearing and vote on proposed ordinance 19-11, amending Section 22-15 of the Roswell City Code relating to construction, repair, and maintenance of sidewalks to be held at the December regular city council meeting.
I have a motion by Counselor Stubbs and a second by Counselor Foster to authorize the advertisement for a proposed... Authorize advertisement and vote for a proposed ordinance 19-11. Mr. Holloman?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Council, again. This ordinance begins the process of looking at the question of what do we do with city sidewalks? Really, there are two questions that we have to consider in looking at this issue. Number one is who is ultimately responsible for the city's sidewalks? And number two, how do we balance and protect the city's interests? Those interests being, one, maintaining the quality of life of the citizens on one hand, and the others in protecting from liability. What we envision is that this ordinance that we're asking to be advertised for a public hearing in December would be the first phase of a three-step process. The ordinance, as it's presented right now, changes the current... Changes our current city code, which solely places the responsibility for the maintenance of the sidewalk on the homeowner, with no exception. What this ordinance does, it accomplishes... Well, I'll speak to that on the next slide. The next two phases that we go, number one, we have to change that initial baseline to allow the city more flexibility in addressing the issues with the sidewalks. Number two would be the creation of an administrative policy, as contemplated by the proposed ordinance, that allows for some of the deviations off of the baseline of homeowner is responsible, absolutely. The third would be that any program created by the city manager that would require expenditure of funds would need to go through the budget process and have final approval through the city council. Specifically, this ordinance addresses four different areas. Number one is that it goes back to the baseline of homeowner responsibility. That is, or property owner responsibility. This is in state statute as the baseline and as the majority of other communities throughout the state. However, the second piece of that is that our ordinances currently do not have a protection mechanism to ensure us from liability. That's contained in state statute in 349-4. It would be a resolution process similar to weeds or condemnations. It would be a resolution process similar to weeds or condemnations. If there is a problem with the sidewalk, we would notify the person, it would go through a resolution, and then one of the consequences of that is that the city is then released from liability, having told the homeowner that they need to fix that. Moving on from that, though, the ordinance as proposed creates the possibility for variances from the mechanism, allowing either someone to request for there to be assistance from the city in making those changes, or if there are certain conditions that might mitigate against the updating of the sidewalks at that point. Fourth is that it dictates for the city manager to create these administrative policies that we're talking about that might allow for a separate funding mechanism, or for a more flexible funding mechanism for the city to be able to address some of the sidewalk maintenance issues. And it also would create, set out to create a more comprehensive plan for doing kind of a rolling sidewalk improvement program. With that, I would stand for any questions that you have.
All right, thank you. I have two individuals have signed up to speak on this item. Once again, let me reiterate, we are only considering whether or not to authorize for the advertisement for a future public hearing and vote on this proposed ordinance. So Mr. Wagner and Ms. Knight, if you'll come forward, state your name and address. You will have three minutes. Mr. Wagner.
My name is Todd Wagner, 2904 North Lee. The section 22-15 is construction, repair, and maintenance of sidewalks. And in A, it says, "All properties within the city shall have and maintain sidewalks in accordance with the standards set forth in the city of Roswell." Shall have, every property in the city of Roswell shall have a sidewalk. And then later on, it talks about the city manager designing a plan and all this other stuff. But there are, you know, probably 60% of the city of Roswell doesn't have sidewalks, maybe 80%. And there's a heck of a lot of neighborhoods that putting a sidewalk in will destroy mature landscaping, cost the landowner thousands and thousands of dollars, and have to tear out all the curb and gutter in their, across their driveway, more, put new sidewalk in. And in my case, I probably would qualify for a variance to not have a sidewalk, because I have about 30 inches from the top of curb to my driveway, to my garage. And I can barely get up at now. I'd have to tear out another $10,000 worth of concrete and repour that whole thing, and I still may not be able to get into it then. So there's, the, the shall, every property shall have is the problem with, that I have. It's a laudable goal to have sidewalks, but there ought to be some mechanism for only new construction and areas where you have major remodels that, that the property owner would build a new sidewalk unless he seeks a variance for the specific reasons that he can't do it. But, you know, Washington, from Country Club to Mescalero, all those properties in there, they don't really have the right-of-way to put in a sidewalk. They've got about three and a half feet from the back of curb, and they're going to tear, tear out some very good-looking landscaping, and it's just going to cost them a fortune to do it. And it's, that's just one place. And then this says all, it doesn't say whether it's developed or vacant property or anything. So I, I really think you need to relook at that portion and figure out what you want and where you want sidewalks. And, you know, get, there's got to be a buy-in with the, with the neighborhood that is going to be required to put sidewalks. You know, I've got 10, 10 houses on my block, and we have to put sidewalks in, that's $125, $30,000, so.
Okay. Mr. Holloman, Counselor Stubbs, let me ask you two to address that, maybe get with Mr. Wagner and see if we can address those concerns. You want to speak on that before Ms. Knight?
I can address part of that right now.
Okay.
So again, like we said, that this, first, it sets out the, establishes the baseline rule, everything should have a sidewalk. And then you have to move back down from that as to whether or not those properties have a sidewalk or not. So I think that Mr. Wagner made a good point, and it, it is our intention, he said that we need to look at where you want to go and what the priority needs to be.
Okay.
One of the considerations we have to look at is the Americans with Disability Act does require that there are, I mean, it has standards for sidewalks. I don't know that we've got discretion as to whether or not we say these do not need sidewalks, but we do have a transition plan, and part of that transition plan is to prioritize those neighborhoods that would get the most benefit from having the sidewalks. That, that, I mean, like, some, with some of the points that he was making, when you have a new construction or a major remodel, those are good opportunities to redo those sidewalks.
Okay. Let's work that, okay? Ms. Knight? Please state your name and address, and you have three minutes.
Hi, I'm Kathy Knight. My address is 202 South Lee. I think that this proposal, I would like to see you vote yes on this. I think the proposal is good. It might not be perfect, but I think it has a lot of, I think it has leeway that you can make variances that you need to make. I think it's going to be a work in progress, but I think it's good. What makes me excited about this is that there is a plan. We're talking about a plan, and I think the plan, as I said, can, is flexible somewhat. And what I really like about the plan is that the city is considering having a funding process for the citizens of Roswell. It'll be a team effort, citizens and city government working together.
All right, thank you, ma'am. All right, I have Counselors Foster and Grant. Counselor Foster, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mayor. Mr. Holloman, one of the things, at committee, we spoke about this administrative policy, and we knew that it might be a type to get it written before we vote on it tonight, but we were wanting to make sure we had it before we voted on the actual ordinance, so that we understood that we weren't voting on something that eventually we're going to create a policy for, and that we actually knew the policy prior to voting on the ordinance. And I just wanted to voice that, but also say, does that still seem possible, that we'll have that, those policies by December?
That, and I can let the city manager speak more to that, but that is still our plan, and I mean, we have kind of the broad strokes of it. We'd like to be able to provide more detail, but, I mean, just to know that there is a plan out there and that we're working with it, and we'll bring that as part of what the presentation will be for the December meeting.
Okay, appreciate it. Just don't want to be voting on something we don't under, don't actually have the policy for prior to it.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Okay. All right, I have Counselor Grant, followed by Counselor Henderson, and then Counselor Oropesa. Counselor Grant, you have the floor.
I think, on that, staying on that same topic, I mean, this issue's been brought up before in the workshop and all that, and I don't think it's been addressed. As far as, my neighborhood doesn't have curb, gutter, or sidewalk, and I think it'd be entirely a waste of money for the city to put one in. But the way the ordinance reads, like was pointed out by Mr. Wagner, there's, it's saying "shall," and it's all dependent on this policy that we're going to create down the future, and you just said we're going to have the broad idea at the next one, but I don't think that's really acceptable with an ordinance, because this is completely relying on what this policy is going to be. And I know what we're trying to do, we have issues. Ms. Knight, that's on South Lee, I mean, obviously a historic district, that, we know there's big issues down there with the trees, and they've tearing up the sidewalks and everything else. So I know there's target areas that we need to address. This is way broad by saying everything. And I don't, I know we're going to be picking and choosing with this policy that's created, is what it seems like, which makes sense, but this ordinance is going to trump any policy that we have when it says every property shall have sidewalks. You know, that, that's going to be, that, that needs to be cleaned up and identified, I think, on what we're trying to do, or even if we can identify an areas, I don't know if we can, because I know we're running into anti-donation stuff here. You know, my next question is, what I see as very common as well, if, you know, the sidewalk gets taken up because a water line is damaged and things like that, it's very common, and it's left unaddressed, is that still on the property owner, or is it on the city, or is it, who's that on? Because I see that common all the time with the properties I look at. You know, the water meters between the street and the sidewalk, and the sidewalk gets busted up to fix the water line.
The, you, if the city has caused the problem, the city should be the one to fix it, if there has been an issue there.
Okay, what if they're not?
If this, if the city is not fixing it?
And what if the city didn't cause the problem?
Then it would be, I mean, by the language of the ordinance, it would be on the homeowner to make that repair, but those are the kinds of situations that we would want to be more flexible on, saying maybe the system, city can provide you funding or time to be able to make those changes.
So we're picking and choosing each property? I just think we're in a slippery slope. Like, if you came down to my street and told we ought to put a sidewalk in, who, who are you going to help financially, who are you not going to help financially? What's that going to be based off of?
And part of that is difficult to put in the ordinance, because then you do have to have some ability to be flexible, so that's where the idea is to put that into the policy. In terms of deciding where we have sidewalks, I don't know that we have the flexibility or the discretion even under the ADA to say, especially in an ordinance, to say, well, these neighborhoods don't have to have sidewalks because they didn't have it anyway. But I do think that we have discretion as to how we enforce it and what our priorities are. So that's why that part got moved into, it's just trying to balance what our-
So would something like that even be in the policy part? Can it be in the policy?
That, that's, that is part of the policy, is identifying what target neighborhoods we have. And, you know, part of the big discussion that we've had is we want to identify a neighborhood and say, this neighborhood is a priority for the city this fiscal year. And then notify all of the residents there, saying, this is going to be a priority, we want you the next, the, in the coming year, so this year, take this time, see what you're able to do, and then come talk to the city about what assistance you might need in terms of getting those repairs done. And then the other part of that is looking at what, what is a public safety concern that the city needs to just step in and make those changes? An example might be around schools. If there's, you know, kids walking to and from schools and the sidewalks are bad, that's a high priority for the city. I mean, you think about Military Heights, where they redid it whenever the road got done, all the way down to the edge. So that, that's part of what would be tried to address in the policy.
When we deem it as a public safety issue, we already have the ability to do that, though, right? We don't need another policy or ordinance to address-
We, I think we have it implicitly, but this would allow us to do it explicitly.
And of course, you know, I know we have problems with sidewalks, I'm playing devil's advocate on all this, the way this is written right now. My next question would be on the funding part of this. What are, what's the, what's the idea, what's the thinking of how much we're wanting to put at this? If we're, if you guys have talked about like a target area, you guys know the cost per 50 feet for a sidewalk. What's the, what's the budget that we're doing?
I mean, we don't have a budget number now, but that will be part of the discussion that we would have to have, is the city manager in building the budget would have to include this in the overall city budget, and then to determine, you know, how big of an area, like you say, how many feet you want to run sidewalks, that kind of thing. So that, that is where we'll need city council back again to say, yeah, this is how much we want to invest in this project.
Well, I would just suggest that for the next meeting, that we have that type of example of like, hey, this is what 100,000 or 200,000 we're thinking can get us, before we commit to an ordinance that just says, every property's going to have a sidewalk. I know it needs to be addressed, but I just, we're creating the law first, and then trying to back into a way around to make it work. I just think we need to have that policy, and an idea budget-wise what we're talking about, because we all know, we don't, you know, we don't have enough money to fix all the roads and all that, and this is just another animal like that. I'll yield.
Okay, thank you. I have Counselor Henderson, and then Counselor Oropesa, that exhausts my list. Counselor Henderson, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mayor. I, you know, I look at this, and I, I've been here 16 years, and for 16 years, we've talked about sidewalks, problems with sidewalks, trying to make the homeowner responsible for a deficient or deteriorating sidewalk, and we've had little success, but at any rate, I think, I think we need to look at this carefully, because I think we're really opening a can of worms, one financially, and then I think we'll have to hire another city manager in charge of sidewalks, because there isn't going to, there isn't anyone that's going to want to pay for a sidewalk. So you can assure, be assured that everybody is going to appeal to get a new sidewalk on the city's dime. So I think that is problematic. I think that the fact that every property shall have a sidewalk is, is a big mistake. I think, for example, we can require sidewalks on new development, or sidewalks on properties that are being remodeled substantially, but to require people to have a sidewalk that have been there 20, 30 years, and they've never had a sidewalk, doesn't make sense to me, so I, I need to have some additional conversation on this one.
All right. Counselor Oropesa, this exhausts my list. Counselor, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. You know, I, I also share the same concerns. I, I don't believe that we should have individuals like, like Counselor Henderson said, that have lived there forever and never had sidewalks, and all of a sudden, they, they're being requested to have sidewalks. I, I have problems with a lot of the language that is, that is in here. In particular, on, let's see, page 102, section 2, it says, "A sidewalk, sidewalk landscape buffer area and all plantings therein shall further be the responsibility of and maintained by the owner of the abiding property. The property owner shall ensure that roots from any tree located either on the property or in the right-of-way do not damage the sidewalks." I have a big problem with that kind of language, because a lot of, a lot of the, the trees that were planted were not by the, the owners. And I might be mistaken, but in, in the historical district, a lot of those were planted by the city. And I'm, I'm not sure how an individual is going to make sure that the roots don't damage And I have a question. If, if an individual asks for, for assistance to build a sidewalk, because sidewalks, from what I understand, the, the price of cement is extremely high, and you're talking around a good $3,000, $4,000 for, for a piece of sidewalk. And, and for, for most individuals, including myself, that is a lot of money to pay just for a, a piece of sidewalk. And, you know, and when, when this hasn't been a, a problem in the past, that we haven't really addressed it, you know, I, I think we're making a big mistake. I, but, but what I want to, to know is what is the consequence that if an individual gets a, a notice, and the waivers are not approved, or even if the waivers are approved, with the understanding that they have to pay back- with the understanding that they have to pay back whatever amount of money it is, if they're not able to pay it, is the city gonna put a lien on it and then follow through with the lien process and take the, the house away?
The potential is there, yes. Um, and I'll address some of the, I'll address some of the questions and, uh, without having our, our policy completed and everything, but I'll give you, I'll give you some broad touchpoints on all of that as well, too. If, um, if we enter into an agreement with the property owners and they fail to pay what is appropriate for what they need to pay, a lien is one of the options that we have in order to recollect the money that has been agreed upon. Um, what we are looking at, um, is the ability to do assessments or essentially low interest loans from the city to assist our property owners that can't, that don't have the cash readily available to do this type of work. We would do a, a low interest loan or a, essentially an assessment where they can pay over a period of time, uh, for that work is there. And so those that are able to pay, uh, that is how we would handle that. Uh, we are looking at, uh, and looking at a lot of different programs. Some of those programs, uh, fixed income individuals, property owners, uh, some of the lower income, uh, people, those are the ones that we would look at as far as, uh, some type of, uh, grant assistance from the city in order to help offset the cost of that. But I believe that, uh, our ability to, uh, take payments in, into the city, we can help govern that. Now, there, there's two different pieces of this thing is what we're looking at doing. The individual and, and if you look at the information on 191, if you look at what the strike through language is, the property owners are currently responsible for sidewalks and the city does not have a lot of latitude to help. And so we're talking about trying to amend this to allow the city to be a little bit more proactive and, and create that partnership that goes with that. Um, the, the trees are, and some of this language in here, and that's where I think i- if we had a better, uh, just, just, uh, a better understanding of what was in the current ordinance would have helped us with this as well, too. The, this, some of this language is already in our current ordinance. Uh, the trees in the parkways are actually the contiguous property owners responsible to in our code. What we are trying to establish, and I shared this at legal committee, that one of the options is, is that if a tree has caused, if the root system has caused a problem to the sidewalk, we're going to say that is the city's responsibility to fix those sections affected by that. I think with Counselor Grant, when he talks about if it is caused by, uh, the, what, if the city has caused that damage, we're responsible for those sections as well, too. And, and then the property owner's responsible for the other sections that are outside of that. Um, and, and I think that that's where we're gonna go with that, but you know, the really quick answer is that we have the ability for liens, we have the ability for assessments. Uh, the idea here is, is that we do a voluntary assessment. Uh, one of the other things that we want to do is that if we can, if we can build it in where we're doing neighborhoods at a time, then we can, we can, the city can actually run that project and that provides all those property owners with the ability to, for a two to three year warranty on the work. So if anything fails on that, uh, afterwards, then we can help them get that fixed underneath the warranty, uh, instead of Uncle Teddy coming out and fixing it, you know, for a, for a case of beer. Uh, and so, so those, those abilities are there. Um, and we're also looking at, but if we can do the neighborhoods, we have the ability to utilize Job Corps or any other kind of contractor to help us get that work done at maybe a, a lower than normal cost as well, too. And so between the warranties and everything, so that's what we're trying to do with the, uh, the, the, uh, the policy. We'll have no trouble with getting the policy done. We do have a draft. Uh, it's just not ready for consumption right now, but the idea is to try to address all of those things within the policy. But that is something, what this ordinance does, it is, allows me to help establish a policy as well. And so hopefully answered that question and a few others with that, so.
Yes, you did. But I am still concerned, uh, that this is an extreme because the, the part of the community that's gonna get impacted the most is gonna be the east side where individuals are, are not, uh, as economically well as other parts of the community. Uh, I, I would, I would say that instead of going through a process like this, that the city develop a sidewalk, uh, fund like we do for the roads and we do for the sewer, uh, manholes on, on a yearly basis, uh, appropriate a certain amount of money and start for, for whatever end of the city and start addressing the, the, the issue of sidewalks. I, I think this is gonna be a burden on a lot of individuals, especially the lower income individuals. And I would hate to see an individual lose a house just because they're unable to, to build a sidewalk or unable to pay the city for the, the, uh, for going in there and, and building a, a sidewalk. And, and I, I, I understand that, uh, the city doesn't have the funding, but we seem to, to work through issues to where we are able to find the monies. And, and so my, my thing is I, I would totally disregard this policy and I would, I would suggest that we come up with a policy that the city would be able to address sidewalks a section at a time on, on a yearly basis until we can get all, everything done. And, and, uh, because I, I see this policy very extreme and, and I see the impact that it's gonna have on, on, uh, the low income individuals. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Counselor. I have Counselor Robach and that exhausts my list. Counselor Robach, you have the floor.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, I was wondering if, uh, if the staff could, uh, explain to me exactly why do we need to reset the baseline? What is the current baseline? Uh, that was a, a term that, uh, that, uh, the, the, our lawyer used, everyone's favorite lawyer, really. And, uh, what, what is, what is our current base, baseline and how are we resetting it? And why is that important?
It, it's not that it's resetting it, it's restating what it is currently.
Okay.
And currently, the-
So, so if I can-
Go ahead.
If, so if, so, so when, if we're not resetting it, then we're just re, we're clearing up the language then? Is that what you're saying?
Right.
So that means, so currently, um, I can think of a property where the property owner ripped out a sidewalk several years ago and never put one back in. Is it currently technically or legally possible for code enforcement to go to that person's house, um, and issue some sort of citation based on that fact?
Given, given what I, how I understand that situation went, uh, they had problems when they tried to take that to court under the way that the ordinance read at that time. The ordinance has since been changed since that has happened.
Oh, I don't, I'm not talking about a particular issue.
Okay.
I'm just saying that if, if right now, if right now, um, I wanted to, as a citizen, I wanted to say, hey, this person ripped a sidewalk out and they never put it back. Um, I would like the city to do something about it. What would the, what would the options, assuming the city agreed with me, what would the options theoretically the city have currently under our current ordinance?
Right. The city does have an ordinance that requires any sidewalk that is taken up to be replaced.
Okay.
So it would be a citation into municipal court like a nuisance.
Okay, so it'd be like a nuisance. So, so, so basically then, with any sidewalk that is currently there, um, the city has a right to have the property owner to continue to maintain that sidewalk. Am I, am I-
Right.
I got that clear. However, if there's not currently a sidewalk there, the city cannot go to a property and say, you must put a sidewalk in. Is that correct?
I believe we can.
We, that, so that's where the ADA comes in. We don't have the power to say that there can't be any sidewalks. And technically under the ADA, you should have sidewalks throughout the neighborhoods. But because of the reality of that requirement, what you do is adopt a transition plan that establishes prioritization. So that's where, that's why the policy is important because it incorporates that transition plan and allows for the prioritization of, of what neighborhoods or sidewalks are needed to be replaced.
I won't write a short answer to that as well, too. We can require them to put in a sidewalk if it's missing. There is a, there's a section within our code that talks about the, if a property is occupiable, you, there, it is required to have a sidewalk as well, too. That's in our, that's in our zoning code area. So they, every, every property is, is required to have a sidewalk currently if it's occupied property.
Okay, so, so if there is not a sidewalk-
It can be required by the city to go after and, and tell them. I think there's a lot of legal, you know, stuff that goes through all of that, but yes, I would say that that's how we would start.
So in that way then, we're not really changing anything except for cleaning up the language?
I'd, I'd say yes. I, I think that's, this is giving us a few other tools in the, in the toolbox as well as to how to tackle that problem.
Sure. Cause then, then what, outside of cleaning up the language, what, what, when I looked over this, what I saw was it gave the city manager an opportunity to create a policy to create an assistance type program. And what that would be is obviously open to debate and you guys have some ideas and et cetera. That's something that is not explicitly stated in the ordinance, it's just given the city manager that has that explicit ability to create that. So, um, could, is it theoretically possible to, to create that policy without changing
It, it would be possible, except then we have a policy that would be conflicting with several different ordinances. Once we have, so the, the goal with this is to collect all of those requirements in one spot and say, this is requirement is X, this is how you change from X. So that way we don't have a situation where we've got policy that's conflicting with ordinance.
Uh, go back to something that, now I don't have the wording for me, but the, the shall wording. So, but effectively what I'm hearing you guys say that effectively that's the rule of law right now, that occupiable properties shall have a sidewalk. Am I, is that the, is that, is that current legal opinion?
That is correct.
Okay. Um, and currently enforceable. So basically, right now, we are in a status where the reality of all the stuff that everybody's talked about is out of sync with our ordinance. Um, you know, I think that it's hard for me to, to go ahead and say, okay, let's change the ordinance, keep it relatively the same, but we're not really matching up to reality. Cause the reality is that we're not really gonna go out and require all these people to shall put in sidewalks. Uh, I think that if we're gonna go through the trouble of changing the ordinance, we need to figure out what matches our reality. Otherwise, why go through the trouble of changing the ordinance if we're gonna create a ordinance that mirrors what we currently have and we're current, and we're not gonna enforce it, uh, anyway. Um, I, I feel like this is, this isn't ready for primetime yet and I don't think that we should open it up for a public hearing until we have done a little more work on it. I yield.
I have Counselor Henderson. Counselor, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mayor. A number of years ago, in order to try to help with this sidewalk problem, um, we adopted kind of a 50/50 program where the homeowner would pay 50% of the cost and the city would budget some money that would allow us to pay the other 50%. And, uh, initially that program, uh, worked, uh, pretty well, but then it just kinda fizzled out. And, um, so, you know, we've, we have tried some things, but, um, for whatever reason, what I thought was a very generous offer to replace your sidewalk, um, at that time we would put up 50% and the homeowner would put up 50%. That's been some time ago. So anyway, we, that's one effort that was made that obviously didn't, uh, wasn't sustainable.
Thank you. At this point, I have no one else lis- listed, uh, on my list. I will call for a roll call vote. A yes or I authorizes, simply authorizes the advertisement for a future public hearing and action or vote on proposed ordinance 1911. A no or nay rejects that and we do not go forward. Counselor?
I, I have a question. You said that it, uh, that it is advertised for future. Are you saying that it could sit a couple months?
December. No. It's going for the, I, when I say the future, for the next city council meeting.
Okay. Just wanted to make that clear.
Yes, this would appear on the December budget, uh, agenda if approved by council tonight. All right, Ms. Call, can you call the roll?
Counselor Grant?
No.
Counselor Best?
Yes.
Counselor Peterson? Counselor Foster?
Yes.
Counselor Stubbs?
Yes.
Counselor Orpesa?
No.
Counselor Henderson?
No.
Counselor Robach?
No.
Motion fails.
All right. Thank you very much. Next item up.
Wait a minute. I take that back. It's a tie vote. It's yours. I apologize. My mistake. You get to make that decision.
No, I, we have four, four here. Now, quick question. Uh, this is not a final action, this is just authorization, so it's majority of those present and voting?
That is correct.
All right. I vote yes.
Okay. Motion passes now.
Okay. All right. Next item up is item number city manager.
Yes, sir. Mayor, city council. Thank you for your work tonight. Uh, just three items, uh, very quickly. Uh, you do have, uh, handed out to you, uh, we're moving some of the co- uh, committee meetings out of city hall due to some, uh, work on the elevator. So we will not be able to get the public to the second floor in order to attend those committee meetings. So we are moving the committee meetings for the next couple of months into the library and the museum, into the Bondura room in the library and the Basset River into the museum. Uh, the list shows which ones. There was a typo on the, uh, the list. Finance committee will be Tuesday on the third, not Thursday on the fifth, due to some scheduling conflicts. Uh, other than that, the schedule is complete. Um, my, uh, the directors of the museum and the library have stated that if you show up early and you'd like a tour or to talk with them a little bit about their, uh, what they've been doing for the community, uh, you're welcome to do that. Uh, second item, last open public forum for the year will be held, uh, next week on Thursday, the 21st at Church on the Move. Uh, while everybody's invited, it is a Ward Five Forum, uh, beginning at 6:00 PM. And the last item, uh, the city of Roswell has partnered with the Roswell Chavas County EDC to hold a housing summit on December 9th from 4:00 PM to 8:00 PM at the convention center here. Uh, invites are being sent out and we are, uh, we're getting speakers from the real estate field, uh, banking and the builders, they'll all be in attendance. We have some of them speaking about, uh, the shortage of housing that we have currently and that is going to, we believe it's going to grow worse. And so we wanna, we wanna get a proactive approach on that. So, uh, we are also, uh, we are also proposing, uh, we're gonna provide, uh, the, the consideration of offers to purchase, uh, city property to do infill housing, affordable housing and, um, and because we've acquired property over time through the liens and through all that process, we want to put that property back out on the market. Uh, so we are pulling our whole group together in order to do that. We believe that the proactive approach is a lot better than what is happening in a lot of our neighboring communities, uh, where they're more reactive now because it's, all of this, all this growth is hitting them. And so, uh, but December 9th, we have partnered with the EDC, will be in the room. Uh, we have speakers through that four hour period from all those industries, uh, as well as the city. And we'll be having a long conversation about housing and, and the need for, for more of it in Roswell. So those are the three items that I had. Any questions or anything else that I need?
Any questions for Mr. Neb? All right. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
I have one individual who signed up to speak, um, on non-agenda items. This is the public participation on non-agenda items. A Mr. Larry Conley. Mr. Conley has declined to speak at this time, let the record reflect. Anything else, counselors, at this time? Counselor Henderson?
Um, I guess, uh, Joe or whoever the staff person might be that's in charge of kinda coordinating with our civic center here, I had a complaint by the university that, um, I had a complaint by the university that they had scheduled their graduation here. And they, the civic center informed them that, that they had been usurped in their graduation time by another event. And they, the civic center failed to notify them. So they've had to arrange their, their graduation someplace else. Then the second thing is they, they set up a, a meeting a week ahead of time to sit down and go over the schedule for their spring graduation. So they met with the management of the staff and got the time set. And then they asked how much it was going to cost and they were told they didn't know at that time and have to figure it out. Well, they had a week to figure it out. So those things kind of bothered me a little bit.
Certainly. Counselor, and I, I wasn't aware of the second item for the spring one. I will tell you that on the first item, and I won't go into detail, that not all of that information is accurate, but I'm happy to talk with you. But I, we will talk with the, the staff because I know that they, they were, they had offered some discounts as well for that spring event as well. So they should have had an idea. Thank you.
All right. Anything else, counselors? If not, I have, oh, I had a clock there. I have 7:12. Where's Jern? Okay.